Okay, we're gonna get started if the board members could please make sure you have your microphones on. Good evening. At 6:30 PM on Monday, December 9th, 2024, I'd like to call the order, the Village Brookfield Board Meeting. Would everyone please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Bridget, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Ketchmark?
Here.
Trustee Kotay?
Here.
Trustee Niermatsu is absent. Trustee Guhuli?
Here.
Trustee Kaluzny will be absent, and Jennifer Hendricks. Trustee Hendricks will be here via telephone. And President Garvey?
Here. And at this point, I would entertain a motion to allow Trustee Hendricks to participate during the board meeting by phone as needed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Kotay, second by Trustee Guhuli. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Kotay?
Aye.
Trustee Guhuli?
Aye.
Trust, or President Garvey?
Aye. Thank you. She will join us in a few moments on a vote or two because we, when we get to that point. We have no appointments or presentations tonight. Tonight, we are having the required public truth and taxation hearing. Notice of the public hearing was published in the November 27th, 2024 addition to the landmark. At the board meeting on November 11th, 2024, the Village Board adopted Resolution Number 2024-60 determining the estimated amounts of money to be raised through ad valorem to property taxes. The amount of requested tax levy is $16,211,410. The total Village and Library property tax levy is estimated to increase by 3.9%. And just for the record, I'd like to note that I called the meeting to order at 6:32 PM. Bridget, can, we have, do we need a roll call for the?
A motion to start the hearing, yes.
Yeah. Bridget, can I have a motion to start the public hearing on the proposed tax levy? So, no move.
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Ketchmark, second by Trustee Kotay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Kotay?
Aye.
Trustee Guhuli?
Aye.
President Garvey?
Aye. So that 6:32, we're starting the public hearing. I previously read the legal, that the legal notice was posted and the purpose of this hearing. I'm gonna ask Doug Cooper, Doug, you wanna make a brief presentation on this? Doug Cooper is our Finance Director. He will make a presentation of the 2024 tax levy. After that, I will open it up to public comment related just to the tax levy and then comments from the Village Board. Thank you, Doug.
Good evening. The property tax levy for the Village of Brookfield is used to fund a number of different items, particularly public safety, fire and police, recreation, and then just general administrative costs. For the 2024 tax levy, the Village request, staff's request, is a total increase of 600, oh, sorry, for the Village, I'm gonna just say $491,202, which is 3.8% above the private, the previous year's levy, excuse me. So, under the state statutes, we are allowed to increase our levy by 3.4%, which is the CPI for this year, or 5%. So it's the lower of 5% or the CPI, which is 3.4. Our levy is increased at 3.82% in order to try and capture revenue associated with new growth, which means house additions, major additions on a house, that type of stuff. The, um, excuse me. The, the Village itself can only go up to 3.4%. So if you have a house that's worth 300, or $100,000, we'll say, that's would be the assessed value on that house. We can only tax up to 3.4% for this year's levy. We add the extra money or the extra percentage to cover what we hope to get, capture for new growth. It's all, it's all defined by the limiting rate, which is what we're under, it's called PTEL. And so that's, that's how come our levy is above the 3.4%. So the, the maximum amount a taxpayer will pay in the Village of Brookfield without any new growth on their property would be the 3.4% of the EAV. And the EAV is determined by the county when they do their annual assessment, or the triennial assessment, and then they adjust it every year. So on that point, are there any questions that, or do you wanna make your public hearing?
Doug, can you also explain how the, how the library levy fits in with the Village levy and why it's on our agenda?
Sure. So, the library, because of the Village of Brookfield, the Village Board here is in charge of the, the revenues that, like, we, we're in charge of tax levies and debt service. Any tax levy or debt service issue that comes from the library has to go through the Village Board for approval. In October, the library approved their tax levy, and then they forwarded it to us, and we included that into our truth and taxation, which is what started the whole process of the tax levy for this year. So the library levy is separate from the Village. We actually asked the county to separate the two levies so that they don't get intermingled for the PTEL or the, um, the limitation for the, um, for the tax levy.
Thank you, Doug. And is it also true, I mean, you spoke about allowing for extra growth, it's not just addition on houses if there was a large commercial development or?
And new growth within the Village, right?
Would, it would be to capture any growth there. If we did not account for that, we would not receive any tax benefit from any new developments, correct?
Right.
Correct. Okay. All right.
President Garvey, just, as you mentioned, the 3.4%, that says it relates to the Village of Brookfield portion of the tax bill?
Right.
Okay, just, I mean, there are a lot of different line items on a tax bill.
Every tax, every taxing body is allowed only 3.4%. But our, but our, we chose a separate line item on the tax bill from the school districts, from the other taxing districts, including the library.
But when we talk about, you know, potential for taxes going up 3.4%, that relates to the Village of Brookfield portion. I mean, every other taxing body can have that same amount, but obviously that makes it.
Right.
Thank you, Trustee Ketchmark. Okay, at this point, I'm gonna open up the public hearing to any comments just related to the tax levy. Is there any comments or questions on this side of the audience related to the proposed tax levy? Yes, sir. If, can I have you just come up to the microphone and state your name?
My name is John Mousik. And a couple questions. Before we're increasing the property taxes, did you guys look at cutting some money? Looking at other places to save money for our budget, for your budget?
Yes, we had a very detailed, like we do every year, we had a very detailed budget workshop and department heads go through. And the property taxes that we levy don't come close to covering all the Village expenses. This goes towards the police and fire and the other things, but we also look at other areas and other sources of revenue to do that. But, so yes, we did do that.
Did you make any cuts anywhere else?
There were probably cuts in programs that were shortened or limited. There was new things that were added for capital improvements and projects going forward. But that was the course, over the course of a very detailed budget process.
Can you give us any details of what these areas were?
Um, I, in terms of line items, in terms of where specific items were cut, I, I guess I couldn't really do that at this point in time.
You're talking new growth, that we, we technically need, and you'll have to?
Sorry, Steve is gonna see if the microphone's, there we go.
You'll have to excuse me, 'cause?
No, please, go ahead.
'Cause I, I have problems understanding some of this. Okay, so the Village needs what percentage of increase to break, to budget our, our, to balance our budget?
So usually what we do is we, we, we determine what our revenues are when we start the budget process. We determine what our revenues are going to be, and then from there, we determine what we can expend the money on. So, I mean, like, 75% of our budget is made up of personnel and pension costs, that type of stuff. So, starting from there, we know that we don't have a lot of movement in there. I can say that this year, we did not add any new positions. Most of our salaries are covered under collective bargaining agreements, so we really don't have a lot of movement at that place. So, we base our budget on all of these different expenditures, and then if there's money left over, then we look at what else we can spend it on. And for like, for instance, this year, we increased our parks maintenance line item to like $260-plus thousand to take care of parks because we have been neglecting those a little bit. So it's not a matter of us cutting a lot because most of our, our budget is salaries, and we're kinda constrained within those particular parameters. So, what, what we do is we determine with that property tax levy, what our maximum amount is that we can raise it to, which is all determined under PTEL. And then we go from there and we include all the other revenues. Excuse me. But we also, one of the things that we fund through this whole levying process and through our other revenues is our road program because that's how we fund the majority of our road program is with general fund revenues.
Okay. So, you're, you're talking that you're asking for the 5%, and that's new growth?
Well, no, we're asking, our total that we're gonna be increasing the library or the Village levy is 3.8%.
Then what's the 5%?
The 5% is the maximum that we could if PTEL allowed us to, but PTEL is, is set at a 5% maximum or the CPI, whichever is the lowest. And right now, the CPI is 3.4%, so we can't go to the full 5. The maximum that we can levy is 3.4%, but we levy a little bit over that to capture new growth, which is included in what they call the limiting rate. You have to include the new growth in the limiting rate.
What is, you maybe said, what is PTEL? Could you remind me?
It's, um, it's called the Property Tax Extension Limitation Act, basically, and what it basically does is it limits the amount of, I mean, what it basically does is it limits the amount of, of taxes that we can levy on a particular residence in the Village of Brookfield.
Right.
And so what the state says is you can, this year, for instance, it says you can only levy up to 3.4% from the previous year's taxes. And that's the CPI, right?
Right. And then you mentioned that the, there is the library, so it's separate from the Village?
Yes.
So, so this is just for the Village, the 3.4, or is the library included in that?
So the library rate increase was 4.69, so the total increase for both entities is 3.97 or 4%. That's what we're asking for. We're not gonna get that, but that's what we're asking for.
And the library board is their own separately elected board. They had a public meeting and a public hearing where they discussed their levy and was open to public comment there. It's an administrative procedure where we have to pass it on or pass through it, but they had their own meeting where they discussed what they were levying for.
I mean, I was at the last meeting when this was kinda being discussed, and again, I am very worried about property taxes increasing. We have one of the highest property taxes in the state of Illinois. You know, for a single household, you know, we're bringing, you know, we're, we're paying almost, you know, 30% or so, you know, for property. Or, you know, we, it's getting to the point, it's getting ridiculous, it's getting hard to, for a working person like myself to live in Brookfield. And now we're looking at possibly, you know, building a new, you know, you guys were talking about a new rec center. There was an article about $2.1 million for a sidewalk outside, you know, around 31st Street that we'd probably be covering. Is some of that, you know, all these are gonna be layered onto this, let alone the library, the school. You know, in a way, it's, it's like we're being nickled and dimed to death here. And I wish there was a better way, you know, and I understand that, you know, yes, we are, we are being affected by inflation and everything, so is the Village. But I, I'm just, I'm worried that you guys are gonna be pushing a lot of the middle class, lower middle class, middle middle class out of Brookfield, and I don't know if that's what you guys want or not. I hopefully not, uh, because, you know, the blue coward person, I think, is what made Brookfield special. So I really wish you guys would, I hope you guys are working real hard to keep our property tax down. I don't know what you guys look at, what you say behind the doors, but I just really hope that you think about people like me who work, you know, a job. I work at the zoo, and I don't make, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, like a lot of, some people do. But I, I really love Brookfield. I've lived here for 30-plus years, but, you know, if the property tax keeps going, I'll, it's forcing me out.
I understand. I can assure you, we don't talk behind closed doors about, we talk about it at public meetings, and we all live in town, we all play, pay the same property taxes rates, so.
Well, some people's incomes are better, bigger than ours, too, in California.
I understand that. Anyone else on this side have any comment on just the tax levy? In a few moments, there'll be a chance for general public comment. Anyone else on this side? Anybody on this side? Yes, ma'am, if you could please come up to the microphone.
Hello?
Yes.
So there's something odd about me giving you my back, so I'm gonna stand over here.
And if you could just state your name, please.
Sure. Uh, my name is Rosio Baessa. I've been living in Brookfield for four years. I love it here. Our first time here was when we were trick-or-treating. My sister-in-law had first moved here, and we joined her for a trick-or-treating event, and it was great. All the families were around. We were going door-to-door. The kids had a great time. The neighbors were able to say hello to each other. And it, it was at that point that we knew we wanna be in Brookfield. So, we moved, we moved here, and we've had an amazing experience. Just this Sat, Saturday, Mr. Ketchmark was giving me a little tour of the Brookfield, I'm sorry, the Grostel train station. It's awesome. I haven't had that experience in Chicago or in Stickney where I previously lived. This is a great town, and I would love to be able to say that I can stay here for another, for 30 years. That would be awesome. Now, uh, when we first bought our house in Stickney, this was in 2009, and my understanding of property tax works was very limited. I think I did what most of us have probably done, where we've gone through an appeal process with Cook County. And, um, in the last year, I've learned that there's a lot of layers, that it's just very hard to understand, just the everyday person to understand. I'm gonna play a one-minute video, uh, audio clip. This is Maria Pappas from, this is October 10th. And I, I think this provides insight on the layers and why I'm here today.
My bill go up. So, we print the bill, and we show them what we have printed, and it's huge black letters on the front of the bill. And it says where your money goes. On the left-hand side is every government that you pay to. And we give you three columns, what it was last year, what it is this year, and whether or not it went up or down. So that any homeowner, landowner, or lot owner looking at this bill can see which government raised their taxes. Now, why is that important? That is important because every one of these governments, every year, has a public hearing. And these public hearings, they actually, actually, at these public hearings, release their budgets. And their budgets involve what is called a levy, L-E-V-Y, not a dam, just a levy. The levy is the amount of money that the government comes in and asks for every year. Unfortunately, what they ask for keeps going up, so what?
So that's why I'm here today. Now, I'm grateful that there is technology and that there's meeting agenda minutes available for the public. Just spending my Friday night and Saturday morning digging this up, this is what I found. So the, these are the budgeted amounts for, for the town for the last five years. 2021, 41 million. 2022, 45.6 million. 2023, 45 million. 2024, 63.9 million. So this is the annual budget for the Village. So this is how much money the local government is working with. Is that fair? 2025, which is what today will be, I think, voted on or potentially, I'm still learning, 66.7 million. Again, I started with 2021, that was 41 million. 2025, that's 66.7 million. Throwing this into a calculator, in five years, that's a $27.5 million increase. That's a 63% increase in the budget. The inflation in 2021 was 7. The inflation in 2024 was 2.6. I don't see how it's fiscally responsible for, in a five-year period, for there to be a 63% increase in the budget. That is alarming.
Doug, can I have you address how the revenue, or Tim, if you wanna address how the revenue amounts change year-to-year and how there's some spikes and why they're there?
If I could just clarify, I think what she's reading is total, total budget.
Total revenue.
That total budget, the general fund of the Village is the, is the fund that pays for most of the salaries and the expenses and the operations of the depart, of, of the Village. And if you looked at the percentage increases of the general fund, I think you would find it's, it's in line with inflation because we have to live within our inflationary increases. The total numbers you're referencing, that includes all our capital projects. We've done a very, been very aggressively getting grants. There's been a lot of grant revenue coming to the Village to do our water mains, to do road improvements throughout the Village. That, those, those revenues also have to show up as expenditures. And so you're correct, those expenditures have gone up, but that's not all, some of that has been leveraged to get additional grant revenue to help pay for those things. So I would be glad to, if you, if you look at the, just look at the general fund, which is easily found on our website, if you look at the general fund budgets, you can find the general fund budgets for every year. You're gonna find that those increases are very much in line with, with inflationary. It gets really complicated. Government accounting, I agree with you, is not easy to understand, but it's, it's, it's done that way for a reason in that each fund has to be its own separate balancing set of accounts, meaning revenues and expenditures have to be kept separately. You're looking at a very large picture involving a lot of mixed, not mixed, but, but projects, capital projects that the Village Board and staff have been working on for years to improve the Village, to improve our water mains, to replace lead lines. All of those expenses are in those numbers. Some of them are paid for through property taxes, but a lot of it, I would say the majority of it is spent on, spent by grant revenue and other revenue sources that we utilize to pay for those.
The presented budget material from the workshop, my understanding was that the largest revenue source was from property taxes. It, did I misunderstand that?
No, it is. The largest single revenue source of the, of the Village is property taxes, but the, there's a lot of other pieces of the pie that, that comprise the $63 million for this year.
You're, you're right, and the piece of the pie that I'm referring to is the one that affects me and my family, and I think it affects everyone here. I know, I would encourage, if you came here, I would encourage you to speak up, even if it's just to share your name, how long you've been here, why you came here, and your experience with the Village, and your position on this in, increase. The last thing that I will say is, Brookfield's amazing. I love it. And and I would love to be able to stay here. And to, to your point on the general fund, at home, if our expenditure in like recreation or movies with the kids or the, the, our groceries, like, the way that I see it, like slicing the pie based on the different funds, which is like a way of categorizing things, to me, it's, it's, it's money that I think we're fortunate enough to, to have, and we have elected officials to administer that in a responsible way. And I, I, I also ask that we take a, a second look at the, the expenses that the Village has control over. I'll, I'll end with this. When I heard about this meeting, about, a, a few days later, I saw that the library posted a notice that there, they have the intent of purchasing a property on, I think, 31 and Park for $250-ish thousand. And they've already inspected it. The, the library asked for an increase in their levy, in the taxes that are generated from our property, to cover expenses through the end of next year. And now they're looking to buy another property. To me, when we're struggling at home with expenses, we don't go out and buy more things. And I expect the same level of measure of fiscal responsibility from our elected officials and other taxing districts in the area. I'm just gonna ask a que, a question, and then I am done. Who is in favor?
Ma'am, this is, you're, I'm sorry, this is public comment, you address the Village Board. You don't address the audience. I'm gonna give everyone a chance to talk, but it's just public procedure. You address the Village Board, not the audience.
Got it. Okay, okay, got it. I invite those that are behind me. If you're, if you oppose the proposed increase, raise your hand. If you have a spouse or another family member?
Again, I'm asking, this isn't, this isn't a poll, the, I'm sorry, it's just a procedure. We have a public comment. It's a public hearing where you can address the Village Board. It's not, and I appreciate you coming forward, and we tried to explain the process to you. And I appreciate you researching those numbers, and I'm not sure if you understood the Village Manager's explanation. We are limited by how much we can increase the levy, and each year that you talked about those figures where it went up was because we received outside sources' grant money. We had the opportunity to turn down that grant money and do that, and not do some of the projects. You spoke of how you love Brookfield and many of the things you like. We had a budget workshop. We invited people to come. There was very few people here, if any. But people could come during the budget workshop and talk to us what they would like to, us to cut in terms of if they like less police and fire, if they like less trick-or-treating events, if they like less other things like that. That's the chance to do that. It's all transparent. It's all out there what we're spending money on, but the $66 million and the rates that you talked about increasing are not because of the property tax levy that we're talking about tonight. We are following the PTEL law, and that's what it's about tonight, so. And I appreciate you spent a lot of time on this and a lot of research, and if you ever want, you know, questions answered in more detail, our Village Manager, our Finance Director, what I know would meet with you personally, because I think you're trying to get an understanding of the process. But I don't want it to be misleading that we're, you know, spending more money than we're allowed to.
I never said that I think you're spending more money than you're allowed to. I'm, I'm, what I'm saying is that budgets, my understanding, are increasing year over year, and that is putting a fin- is putting a financial strain on our family personally. And from what I heard from Mrs. Pappas, the Cook County Treasurer, I, we all need to do this for the sixteen taxing districts that are in our tax bill. I know people don't come to the meetings, I know. We are here, and again, I encourage those to speak up. Thank you so much for
Thank you for coming out.
...your service, and I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Who else on this side? Public comment, this is just on the tax levy at this point, there'll be a chance for general public comment. Sir, if you could please come up to the microphone?
Good evening, Scott Paiskers, my name, lived in Brookfield since nineteen sixty-five. Recently, we received a Cook County tax increase, I'm sure everyone here has done that. My property taxes went up thirty-three hundred dollars, which is, now I'm paying an extra six hundred dollars a month on my mortgage from twenty-five hundred dollars to thirty-one hundred dollars. Now, this is going to add on top of that, I'm understanding, correct? So this doesn't have to do with the current property tax that we have right now, the bill from Cook County?
Doug, can you address that?
Yeah, I'm with her, I'm very confused about how all this government financing works.
Sure. So the way that the tax bills work, in August or September, you got that tax bill, that's the second distribution. That is your last distribution for the 2023 property taxes. So this levy here is what you could be paying for next year. So it's a year, they call it a year in arrears because of the way that the county had set this up a long time ago, but the 2024 tax levy will be paid for in 2025, it'll be paid in two installments. The first installment will be paid in March, and it's basically fifty-five percent of your previous tax bill. And then the second installment should be paid in October, and it will be the true-up of your assessed value of your house and tax rates that apply to it from all of your taxing entities.
Okay, so this levy that you guys are talking, that's going to be added on next year?
Right, it'll be a part of your new tax bill for next year.
Okay. Addressing that, one of the points she brought up, I understand that you guys bought a property, the old theater on Grand Avenue?
That's correct.
Is that right? And then you bought a property on Thirty-first Street that used to be a automobile repair shop?
We did not purchase that, it was given to the village.
It was given to the village?
Yes.
Okay, so what's, how much did you pay for that building over there on Grand?
Well, if I can clarify, the property on Grand that's on the agenda this evening is, that was done out of a TIF tax increment financing district, so that was not paid for out of your, out of any property taxes that you, that you, as a homeowner, would have paid.
Okay, so why are you, why are they, why are you guys buying that property?
Because we're trying to promote economic development, because one of the strategies of the board to reduce the burden on property taxpayers is to increase sales tax and other taxes, which attracts, people come from out of town and spend money, so if we increase the sales tax revenue, it reduces our reliance on property taxes.
I understand that, but what is going to go in, what is going to go in that building? That's going to increase the sales revenue tax enough to, you know, not increase my property tax?
Later on this evening, we're going to talk about the options for that and putting it out for requests for proposals for development. It was a vacant property, it's been vacant, I mean, the other properties that we're acquiring are vacant, and we're trying to boost the sales tax revenue, so we don't have a specific decision yet, but we're going to talk about it later tonight.
Okay. I'm a hundred percent opposed of this tax levy, just let everyone know.
Thank you for coming out. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Just one question.
If you could please come up to the mic, just so everyone can hear, there's people maybe listening online, it helps them here, so I appreciate you coming up.
My name's Joe Godfrey, I live on Jackson Avenue, I've been here over thirty years too. One question on the portion that comes from, the request from the library, can you explain that process and?
So the library has their own board, they have their own library director, and they put together their budget or their appropriations for the year, and then they determine what their tax levy is going to be, and then they present that tax levy to their board. Their board will approve it, and then they send that over to us in October so that we can include that in our numbers, that we estimate the library or the total village tax levy will be.
And so when you get that from the board from the library, do you just accept it? Do you question it? Do you ask them what they need two point, actually, two point, or two point million, two point nine million dollars for?
What they do is they do basically the same things we're doing, they're trying to capture that new growth. And so they raise theirs a little bit higher than we do, but they're making a different assumption on new growth, but that's what they're attempting to do also. They're under a PTAL, the same limitations that we are, and their levy will only be extended to the three point four percent that we have, excluding new growth.
Okay, I know you want to capture new growth, but do they, what are they going to use the money for? That's a lot of money.
That's up to them, I don't know how they spend their money, they give us the appropriations, and it's in the, included in the packet.
And they have, they have public meetings where they talk about this, and I know a lot of people, we have a liaison from our board that sits in their meetings, but they have, they're required, they publish their agendas and have their meetings, and they talk about their budget and what they're spending on, and before they pass their levy, they ask for public comment. So that's where those questions are most appropriately addressed.
So where's the breakdown, is that, if that's public knowledge, is that posted somewhere?
The library also posts their budget and their levy request on their website.
And so it's broken down by light item?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize to the audience, I know there's some people uncomfortable, there's a gentleman up here that wants to have his face covered, he's not, I know who he is, he's just, I know some of you feel uncomfortable, I was going to ask him to take his mask off, but he wants to keep it on, so, but everything's, everybody's okay.
I brought my shield on.
Okay. All right, any other public comment on this side? Yes, sir?
I promise I'll be brief, I'm not known for being brief. My name is John Dumas, I've lived in Brookfield all my life, and I don't disagree with anything that anybody said tonight, but I think it's where the frustration is directed is the issue. This, I have a degree in finance, I was a CFO of a large financial institution in DuPage County for the last thirty-five years. I'm retiring this year. I don't understand a lot of this stuff myself, okay, and I've done this for my whole career, so it's complicated. But I was approached earlier this year, when I had announced that I was retiring, by some acquaintances, some other gentlemen I know who are attorneys and others, other financial people, they're creating, I'm not a leader of the group, so I'm not speaking for them, but they're creating an organization that they're calling the Illinois Property Tax Reform Coalition. There's been a lot of talk in Illinois over the years about reforming the way property taxes are done in this state, and it's never happened, or it hasn't happened to any great extent, and these gentlemen are kind of fed up with it, probably as much as you are, all of you are, but they are going to approach this subject and lobby for it and be involved. So they asked me to be involved in some capacity, I don't know exactly what yet, but, so I've been studying this, is my point, and it's very difficult, I agree with all of you, and it's extremely frustrating. And I feel for Doug, and I feel for Tim, and everybody else has got to deal with this, and the board, because it is so complicated. But this group, I understand, is going to become public in 2025. I promise I'll put it out there on Facebook and Brookfield Connections or whatever, I'm not in these groups very much, but we'll post this stuff out there, it'll be very public, that it's out there. Your frustration really needs to go to Cook County, and in particular to the state, because they're the ones who've created this problem, they're the ones who ignored it for years. This issue in Brookfield is dollars, hundreds of dollars that are affecting you individually. What's affecting you from the state and county level is thousands and thousands of dollars. So if this levy doesn't pass or doesn't come through, it wouldn't hurt you any, but it's not going to change your, you know, your life dramatically, whereas it, the state could save you thousands and thousands of dollars a year in property taxes, potentially. So I would encourage you to look for groups like this, that's not the only one that's out there, but Google it, Google Illinois Property Tax Reform and see what's out there. There are other groups too that are fighting for the same thing. And that's what I would encourage you to do, because this is not where the issue is, the issue's on that bigger level. Trust me, I've studied this intensely now for the last six, eight months, and that's where the issues are, because the villages, all of them, it's not just Brookfield, they all operate within the system that they're given, and that's all that they can do. And they can lobby maybe to have it changed, but, you know, that's going to have limited success, but that's where the problem is. It's not in Brookfield, it's not in LaGrange and Lyons, it's in the state and in the county. These assessments are crazy, the way they do assessments. You know, a property that sells for three hundred thousand and assesses for twenty-five thousand dollars, or, numbers change dramatically. It doesn't make any sense, and people have been saying this for a long time, hopefully this group will have more success, but that's what I would encourage you to do, is to direct your frustration at the county, but in particular at the state level, because they're the ones who have the power to do it. You have a veto-proof state senate and representatives, you have a Democratic governor, you have everything lined up to get this fixed, and it still hasn't been fixed, and hopefully it will be, but keep your eye out for that, because it's going to get, you know, hopefully it'll be well-publicized when they start to do this. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment on just the tax levy? Okay, hearing no further public comment, I would ask if the village trustees have any further comment other than the previous?
I do, President Garvey. And I think, you know, as we've heard several times here, you know, some of this can be very confusing and hard to understand. Let's try to put a little bit of it in perspective. What is the tax levy that we're asking for here, the total dollar amount?
For the total dollar amount is... Sixteen, I'm sorry, the total dollar amount is sixteen million, two-hundred-and-eleven thousand.
That's with the library?
That's with the library.
Okay. What is the Brookfield portion, the village?
Thirteen million, three-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand.
So that's thirteen million dollars that's coming from the tax levy. You just mentioned how much the budget was for the coming year, it was sixty million dollars, so thirteen million dollars of that.
Sixty-six point seven.
Okay, so thirteen million dollars of that is coming from the property taxes. What percentage outside of the infrastructure does the property taxes cover of our operations?
Probably about maybe, I don't know, forty percent?
So the property taxes that the village residents pay only covers that much of our operations, the rest of it is through
Income taxes and sales taxes.
Sales tax, income tax, you know, fees, fines, parking tickets, grants.
Grants, yeah.
There was a slide we had somewhere, what was the, Derek's here to our village engineer, what was the dollar amount of infrastructure work we had done this year?
Between eighteen and twenty million dollars.
So that is part of the sixty-some million dollars, eighteen to twenty million of that was infrastructure. And I know we had a slide somewhere in here that talked about the grants we had received, as well as the no-interest loans on that. Do you remember what that dollar amount was?
Well, for twenty-four, it was about twenty million dollars.
So twenty million dollars of the eighteen to twenty million dollars of infrastructure work we did was coming from grants and zero-interest loans. You know, as the one comment, you know, we heard that what you're talking about in the village of Brookfield and your taxes doesn't even come close to running our village. There's a slide, Stevie, can you find that real easy with the dollar? There's a really interesting slide here, and what Maria Pappas was talking about, it shows the taxing bodies and just how much of your tax bill is to the village of Brookfield. So if you look at this, let's see, where's the village of Brookfield, there, right to the right of George Washington, so seventeen percent of your tax bill is going to the village of Brookfield. So seventeen percent of your tax bill goes to the village of Brookfield, and that tax amount only covers about forty percent of the operations of our village. So you can see how it's split up, when you look at the schools, you know, the schools, most of their revenue is coming from property taxes. They're not, they don't issue fines, they don't get sales tax, they can't get grant money. But look at the dollar amounts, if you add the high school and the elementary schools here, you're at sixty percent of your tax dollars going to fund the schools. So I think some of that helps the perspective a little bit of where your tax dollar goes, because we could, you know, ask for a twenty percent increase in your taxes, that would not cover the operations of the village. Property taxes do not cover it. That's why we're always looking for the, whether it's the grants or increasing the sales tax, that is so important for us going forward. You know, sometimes, a lot of you have heard on the news with, you know, Woodfield Mall, when Woodfield Mall was doing great, and they had all the sales, proper, sales tax coming in, it was fantastic, now the mall's not doing as well, and all of a sudden that burden shifted over to the residents. That's where we want to try to work on the sales tax and other things here in town, so we shift that burden away from the residents. The other thing with the reassessment, I mean, I think over the last few years, all of us have had our properties reassessed through the county, and some of those reassessments have been, you know, crazy how much it's gone up. You know, I just, maybe some of that helps a little bit in understanding this. We operate with a balanced budget every year, it's extremely difficult to do that. You know, even when we get the grants, when you look at a lot of the street work, you know, if you look at Burlington here, that was a federal grant that covered seventy-five percent or eighty percent of that. You know, that's eighty percent of the federal government helping us to pave our roads in Brookfield. So, you know, that's a pretty good deal for us here in town. That's all I had, like I said, I just hope some of that helps with the understanding.
To your point with that too, is that in order to receive those grants, we have to show that we can pay the other portion of it. So otherwise, we have to pay the whole thing. So when we can show that we can expend that amount, then we receive those, a really large portion of those projects comes in grants.
I agree with both those comments, and from a budgetary, government budgeting category, we have to, even, let's say we get a twenty million dollar grant, it's still showing up as a twenty million dollar expenditure, even though that's coming from grant, we still have to show it in the numbers that the resident talked about. So it is a little bit, it can be misleading, and it can make it look like we are spending, well, ten or fifteen percent more than last year, but it may be because we've been successful in getting grants, but we have to budget and show the entire expenditure regardless of where that expense is coming from. So it does get, it's marquee and it gets confusing, but as President Garvey said, glad to talk to you about it and try to explain it to you.
Any other comments from the board?
But Tim, you were mentioning too, with the theater building or the other property, you know, we purchased. Again, that's one of those things that can get a little confusing as well, but we set up TIF districts, as they're called, tax incremental financing districts, in several areas in town, along Ogden Avenue, on Grand Boulevard, on Broadway. Trying to sum that up quick, it's a economic development tool that allows, as there's activity that happens in those districts and there's development that happens, that extra tax amount goes back into that district for, you know, improvements to the district, in this case, purchasing, you know, a vacant building that we hope to get on the tax rolls and turn into something that helps the whole district. So that, you know, as Tim mentioned, is not something that, you know, the residents are paying for per se, you know, certainly not out of your property tax levy. It's because of, you know, TIF districts that you see areas, whether it be LaGrange or Oak Park, or all the work that's being done, you know, in Berwin along Roosevelt, those are through TIF districts. If you didn't have those TIF districts, it would be up to the villages to come up with the money to do all these things on their own. That can be very difficult, that's why you don't see that happen without these tax districts in many areas.
Other comments from the board? I, and I speak for the board, we understand the frustration and the sticker, I received a very large property tax bill myself also. We take this very seriously, we go through the process, the budget process, we're low on the totem pole, we receive unfunded mandates from the federal and state government, I mean, the lead water service is a prime example. The federal government said, you know what, lead service is no longer appropriate, we need you to replace it all over the next twenty to thirty years. They don't say how to pay for it, or how to pay for it, you got to come up with a way. They did create, it's very speculative each year how much funding is going to be available, but they said, okay, you have to replace all your lead service lines, go for it and figure out how to pay for it. That's just one example, there's other programs and other things, the county does it to us too sometimes, and says, you know, they approached us on, you know, minimum wage ordinances in the town and things like this without talking about how to pay for it. We work really hard to try and keep the budget balance, we also try and keep the services at the level that people have come to expect. We have a very good full-time police department that has to cover the town, we have a very good fire department with two full-time fire stations that has equipment that is needed to protect everybody in town. The schools, you know, you can talk to the go-to-school districts, go-to-school board meetings, talk about the services they provide, but I think many of us have had the benefits of the schools. You got to talk to the appropriate people on each of the line items, we've done our best that we can here, and as Trusty Ketchmark emphasized the point, the property tax levy doesn't come close to covering all our expenses, so I appreciate everybody that came out tonight to make public comment. I invite you every year to come out to not just this meeting, but our budget workshop I invite you every year to come out to not just this meeting, but our budget workshops where we talk about it and all that information is published ahead of time, available and online, and we're always open to proposed cuts that are going to make a difference that, you know, people support making cuts in services. We're always open to that. Okay? There being no further public comment or board comment, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the truth in taxation hearing at 7:18 PM.
So moved.
Second?
The motion to adjourn the truth in taxation hearing was made by Trusty Gahulie, second by Trusty Ketchmark. Roll call, please.
Trusty Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trusty Kotay?
Aye.
Trusty Gahulie?
Aye.
President Garvey?
Aye. Okay, the public levy hearing is adjourned at 7:18. We're going to go back to the regular village board meeting, which at this point in time I will open up to public, general public comment. Is there anyone on this side that has any public comment? Yes, if you could please come to the microphone.
I'm James Connelly. I'm speaking on behalf of Mary Kelzada, 9343 Jefferson. Mary has lived here almost twenty-five years here in the village. She would be here herself, but she has a serious mobility disability. In the year of 2008, she applied for the amendment that was approved in 2008 for disability placage. The requirement for that is to show proof of your disability through Secretary of State and pay a twenty-five-dollar fee for the installation of the sign. Every two years you're required to provide evidence of that disability. This fall, a letter was sent by the police department. You have a very wonderful new administrator dealing with the nuts and bolts of the law. He read it and determined that there should be a twenty-dollar, twenty-five-dollar fee every year to have that sign, which is a little bit confusing because if you look at the proposal from 2008, it talks about what, who is to be served, who's to be provided for, and that there is a set fee for the sign. That fee was never charged until recently, so we were asking that the board reviews that amendment and reconsider it. When I had contact with Access Living of Metro Chicago, which advocates for disability issues and rights, they were a little concerned about why if there was no fee from the time that she got it or when the proposal was approved in 2008 to where there is a fee now. And they sent out some interns and some law students to go out there and talk to individuals in the village. It's not that difficult to find because the signs are in front of the house and had some conversations talking to them. Many of them are elderly on fixed income, some of them are disabled on SSI. In conversations with people I know at times, there are some veterans here that benefit from that. I'm asking that the board would reconsider or review that amendment and find out that, continue if a new applicant does get approved for it and that the cost for the village, and I know fifteen years ago it was twenty-five dollars, we know that producing a sign, putting it up, having our wonderful DPW people put that sign in front of the house is a cost and those people applying it should pay for that cost, but to ask for like a village city sticker, to pay that fee is kind of, it's kind of difficult for individuals that are fixed income, that are on disability or honoring our vets. I know that taxes, fees, fines, things that you've been talking about tonight, it helps the village. It helps provide the economic development. It provides events like last Saturday at the old train station to have a wonderful experience. And we all have to do our part, but we know that there's people in the village, and I can name eight or nine of them within my general area, that they like hiding their vehicle, they don't want to pay the village vehicle tax, and it's on them, but I ask you that you reconsider that proposal from, amendment from '08, really look at, do we really want to tax the disability, those that are disabled, those that are elderly, those that qualify such as veterans and weigh that. The letter, as I submitted the proposal of the amendment to each one of you, also the letter and who the individual is, I hope that you take some time, look at it and feel like maybe continue to accept new people, make sure that we cover the cost of the signs, but don't burden those that are really required, that prilly are of not the greatest means to not have that yearly fee. I thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll have village staff update the village board on the process and how the annual review's required to check the sign each year to see if the person still needs it and the process we go through and if the board looks to make a change, we can bring it forward. Anyone else on this side have any general public comment? Is there someone raising their hand back there? Yes, I'm sorry. I saw a hand come up, but I couldn't...
Hey, my name is Jenny Priswak. I just want to touch on a couple of things. You mentioned this grant for the water bill that we received in Brookfield, correct? Can you explain to me why I'm paying additional money for the copper being put into the house on every water bill? Anyone?
I'm sorry, we didn't...
On the water bill?
Yes.
For all the pipes that were put in, there was a grant that was received, correct?
The grant did not cover the full amount of the replacement. The board passed an increase in water to build a fund to replace all the water services that needed to be replaced throughout the village over the required time period.
Okay.
And we're not replacing just the water main down, the water lines down the street, we're going all the way to the inside of the house to the water meter. Other towns are charging individuals to do the portion from the water line, from the main line down the street to the actual house, but we thought it was most fair to do it all the way to the house and do it with one increase, funding it over the course of the years to help pay for it.
No, I've asked this numerous times in my water bills. Wells came here and called and been hung up on twice asking this. I rent, why am I getting the increase?
Yeah, that must be an arrangement with your private landlord. If you have a water rate or water bill through your landlord or your lease, that's between you and your landlord.
So you'll let up every building that pays their own water and not the person who owns the building? Is that correct? I'm just trying to understand.
We send the water bill to the property owners, my understanding, and if there's an arrangement between you, whether your lease requires you to pay the utilities or he, they pay the utilities, that's between you and your landlord.
My water bill is in my name.
And that's maybe what's set up with your landlord.
So I'm paying for something that he owns initially? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I guess that's the case. You could, I mean, negotiate that in the terms of your lease that you don't want to pay the water bill.
Well, I'm just, again, trying to understand.
And I understand your question, now that I understand your question, yes.
Okay. And then for the library, that was also pretty much handed to you guys a few years back. Is that accurate to say it wasn't fully paid from Brookfield? So you knew this extra money would be wanted? Is that correct?
I'm not sure.
The library that was built recently, was, how much of that was actually taken out of tax dollars?
There was a referendum for that.
But the referendum failed, but they paid for it with other funds.
They had a million-dollar donation as part of that.
Right, but I mean, your question is, we do not expend or authorize expenditures of library funds. We had nothing to do with paying for that building.
I completely agree and I understand, but you knew now that this would come into, coming into this levy tax, that they were going to need additional money at some point? Why wasn't there that thought of previously?
It was thought of, they have a separately-elected library board and they have public meetings and the place to ask why the library board is spending more money and what they're doing is at the library board meetings.
So is it necessary to ask for an increase here as opposed to just telling them no? Because you just said that it was normally four-point-three and we're asking for four-point-eight increase? Is that correct on a levy? Sir, I'm sorry, I didn't call your name.
Our finance director, Doug Cooper, went back and sat down on the odds, but he was the one that addressed the fact that the library is...
Oh, I apologize.
No, that's okay, that the library is asking for additional funds, but again, that was addressed through the library board, the elected officials of the library board at their public meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other general public comment on this side, my right side? Yes, sir, sure, if you can just, again, the reason I want you to come up is just because there are some people listening online.
So the lead service line, we have that little line item on the water bill. It says lead service line, twenty-seven dollars. Is that part of the funding that you guys are talking about to replace all the lines?
That is part of it, yes.
And how long is that going to be going on our water bill?
Tim, are you able to answer?
It's a, I believe a thirty-year loan, and just to clarify, we didn't get a grant to replace the lead lines, we got a zero-interest loan. So how that works is we have to pay the money upfront, we have to replace about three-thousand lead lines throughout the village that's connected to the public water supply. That's a very large expenditure that we could not afford to pay out of the general operating budgets of the village, but we've been proactive and aggressive at going after state money that's offering, what do we get, twenty million dollars in one year of zero interest for the next thirty years. So we're paying for those replacements in the next three or four years.
Can I ask the people in the back of the room to not talk and respect other people talking? I gave everyone a chance to talk, it's hard to hear up here.
We're going to expend all of that money in about three years to replace all the lead lines and then pay that money back out of that line item in your water bill for the next thirty years. After thirty years, when the loan's paid off, that line item disappears off the water bill.
Okay. I'll be dead then, but thank you.
No, you won't.
Any other general public comment on my right side? Any general public comment on this side? Yes, sir.
Larry Fernita, 8822 Brookfield Avenue. I manage a six-story condo over here and I want to say, you know, I've worked with a lot of village officials and they've been great. I also worked with a lot of your police force here who have been very helpful at the condo with issues we've had. Couple of things with the condo, we pay garbage bill that, you know, we're commercial property. Why is our garbage bill, we get a separate bill from Groot, how come we can't outsource to a different garbage disposal company or even negotiate the contract?
Doug or Tim, are you able to answer that? I know it's kind of covered in the audience that there's ways to...
I guess my question is, is, you know, we have a budget, you guys got a budget, we're all looking to save money and so forth, but I can't go to Groot and try to negotiate or something, you know, I don't know if the village members are, you know, doing the best interest and getting the best price for me, so, I mean, I would hope so, but...
Doug, can you explain how the commercial or multifamily contracts work?
As I was saying, there's a couple of components to this. There's an interest of the village of not having, you can imagine like in the downtown area, if we allowed every commercial building to have a different garbage hauler, every condo or apartment building to have a different garbage hauler, we may have eight different garbage hauling trucks daily coming through town, so we try to avoid that by having one hauler, which is Groot. That's point A. Point B is, yes, we do think we negotiate a new contract every, I think the contract now is about a six- or seven-year contract. Using the economies of scale of aggregating all of the business accounts into one contract, we do believe that we can drive down the price more than if you went off by yourself and...
So I think when that building was built, we were able to, that this contracting wasn't happening at the time. I think we were able to negotiate. So when did that change that we can no longer negotiate our contract?
That I don't know.
It's been that way, I know since I've been here in 2009, and then they maintained the contract with Groot and then they just renewed it probably about four years ago and they kept that stipulation in there, so...
I don't know if they were given notice on that, but I'm just, I mean, I know this has been a while, this is the first time I've been to one of these meetings, so I just wanted to bring that up, so...
And if I could just, we do also belong to the West Cook County Solid Waste Agency, so there's a component of the contractor group hauling the waste and the pickup, but there's also a disposal fee that the hauler pays and we belong to the West Cook County Solid Waste Agency and they negotiate a deal with other towns to get the best deal for the disposal, because it's not just the pickup, it's where they take it. So that's how we also try to look out for the multifamily, commercial and residential by trying to keep the rates down, by getting a group rate through what's called the RDP, the Regional Disposal Project.
Okay. Am I able to see that contract, you know, just to see how...
Sure.
Okay, all right, that's, all right. Second question is, I've heard this thing of like sometimes the village of Brookfield does this thing, they like, we're going to do a study, you know, on a piece of property or an instance. I'll give you an example. My mother lives on Forty-Fifth and Custer, the dividing line between Brookfield and Lyons. With all the traffic that's going down Ogden Avenue at the end, you know, during rush hour at night, people tend to dart down through Brookfield, through Lyons. Lyons has made some headway of putting up roadblocks and so, you know, you can't get through and so forth, but Custer Avenue ends up becoming like, you know, a speedway to get to Forty-seventh and to jump on First Avenue. Lyons at one time, people of residents of Lyons complained, they put up a stop sign at the corner. That intersection right now is not a four-way stop, it's a three-way stop, meaning there's no stop sign on the Village of Brookfield side at Forty-Fifth and Custer, which then confuses a lot of people because they think it's a, you know, some people think, you know, if not new to the area, they think it's a four-way, but then, oops, cars come flying down there. Is there a way, you know, and I think there was a study done on that, which I don't know what it costs, but I heard it cost some money, but, I mean, the Village of Lyons just put it up there, they didn't do a study, they just put it up there and it's kind of slowing down the speedway thorough through. Is there a way the village can look into that or...
You can't see this because while you're standing there, the police chief is sitting behind you taking notes. We have a committee that reviews these types of requests. You know, the dynamics have changed over there and the construction at Forty-seventh and East Avenue, which is going to be going on for a long time, which is beyond our control is going to affect even that far down, so chief is going to look into, talking to it with the committee, we always look for, you know, where we might need to change something, so he can bring something forward and if you, he's got, you can get his card or number and he can be in touch with you after they review it.
Yeah, it's just to prevent this, you know, I get it, people are trying to get home and, but, you know, they're darting down all these side streets and everything else. And then, last question is, I know you guys are trying to promote a lot of economic growth, that's the term I've been hearing here tonight, to bring in people to Brookfield, which I've seen a big improvement, you know, coming, you know, lots of people coming into the farmer's market, just this weekend was really nice. So you're bringing all this economic growth to the area, but the problem I see is, where do people park? And what I'm trying to get to is like La Grange, downtown La Grange had that issue and then they built like a two-story parking lot. What, is there something that Brookfield in the near future or has talk been, you know, talked about, about, you know, I know there was that pie section over here on, was it by the candy store that was there or something?
Yes.
You know, I mean, is there anything, how to improve parking, because I mean, there's still that question today, where's downtown Brookfield? Is it here at the railroad tracks or is it eight corners? I mean, so where, you know, where's the economic growth or where's that trying to, you know, where are you trying to set this up and is future parking going to be considered?
Those are topics that we talk about all the time through...
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, it's a very good question. And you talked about that pie section, that's actually owned by a private developer that's in the planning process, about to come forward with like probably the largest development in Brookfield history. Parking will be needed going forward and the board and staff are already looking at options. La Grange, we're familiar with how La Grange has done it and there's been special assessments on businesses and things like this, but we will look, we are looking at that as we go forward. It's, we're getting to the point where it's going to be more likely, but it's, you don't build parking hoping development comes, you have the development, then you work with parking as you go forward, but we do realize that, so...
Bring up another topic. So you're saying you're, you know, a developer possibly building something, assuming condos or something, I have no idea, but I know there's been a lot of talks about condos, there was a, on the south side of the tracks there by the old Cock Robbin, there was a house that was torn down, there's going to be a development there, I've seen that. My suggestion or what I would like to see, since I own a property in that forty-story condo, since those are resident-owned and we each get, you know, we pay close to four-hundred-thousand dollars in property tax, you talk about property tax, we paid close to ten thousand dollars for a glorified apartment. You know, with no backyard, no, I mean, whatever, it's on, you know, it was five lots that were there, but my question is, is, you know, I've seen the, I don't know the name, but there was an apartment complex built on Grand, which, you know, was next to the massage place.
The spa.
Yeah. Kind of think it's an eyesore. You know, I hope the board in the future, when, you know, future development comes into town, especially high-rises, that they think of that consideration of trying to keep the aesthetics to flow with the town. I'm not saying the building I live in is the best, but it does, you know, I mean, it does have some very, the builders who built... it does have some very, the builders who built that put a lot of thought into it. There was a lot of kickback from the village at the time when that was built, as far as parking, you know, and then we have issues with parking on Forest Avenue and so forth. But besides that, I'm just saying is, I, I, as a resident, since I own a condo, and I know what I pay for a condo for property taxes, I would recommend to bring in more, if you're going to do it, make sure they're condos and not glorified apartments, because apartment building, I think, only brings in one tax bill, where if you bring in a 14-unit condo, it's going to bring in 14 separate con, or tax bills, which will bring more revenue to the village.
Okay.
So.
We appreciate you coming out tonight. We appreciate your input and your comments, and chief will look into that situation. Okay, any other public comments on this side? Okay, hearing no further public comments. We're going to move on to reports of special committees. Trustee Kotay, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a corporate warrant dated December 9th, 2024, in the amount of $2,545,357.64.
Second. Okay, the motion to approve the warrant was made by trustee Kotay, second by trustee Ketchmark. Trustee Kotay, are there any highlights or anything?
Yes, 376,000 of it was going towards Ellett Park improvements, and 311,000 of it was part of the street improvement program.
Do any board members have any questions or comments related to the corporate warrant? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Kotay?
Aye.
Trustee Kahuli?
Aye.
President Garvey?
Aye. Um, in regards to DPW, first thing I'd like to say is thank you to DPW, the Police Department, Fire Department, and village staff for the successful holiday event over the weekend. The Forest Department worked exceptionally hard to make sure everything was set up. The holiday event was set up, the tree lighting was prepared, the blockades were set up. Utilities Department, they repaired two main breaks, one on Madison and one on Prairie. And the Streets Department completed a final sweep of town for leaves. So please, from this moment on, don't put any more leaves in the street, put them in your receptacles in the alley. They will not be coming back around to pick them up. As always, if you have issues in town or see issues in town, the best way to pass this information is via the See, Click, Fix program. Regards to the library, people might have had questions about the library. Their meeting is on the fourth Wednesday of the month, except for this month, because that is Christmas. It'll be on the third Wednesday of this month. The library does have their big annual pajama storytime coming Friday, and, and following, there will be the Saturday's Friends and Foundation Free Gift Wrapping Event. For the holiday pajama extravaganza, you will not have to see me in pajamas, so that's thankful. The families are invited for your best holiday pajamas to join the library for a special after-hours night of festivities. The Friends and Foundation Holiday Gift Wrapping and Book Sale will be Saturday, December 14th, and they will be doing gift wrapping, and those bonuses will go to the Friends and Foundation of the library. Don't forget that you can still submit recipes or memories about Arthur, Arthur Williams, the late employee of the library, and submit the recipes for the Arthur's Cookbook, Food for the Soul. You can submit those at the library or via their website online through the end of December. If you are in need of assistance, we do have several food pantries in town. Tomorrow night is a Share Food, Share Love Food Pantry. They are open on Tuesday evenings. Please go visit if you are in need. If you are looking to help and assist with something larger than yourselves, that is a perfect place to go check out. Go check out Share Food, Share Love. I believe they are on Facebook. If not, contact me. I will get you in touch with the right person. They're always looking for help and volunteers. If you're a veteran in need of assistance, you can go to the Veterans Assistance Commission of Cook County, where you can see everything offered to veterans in the Cook County area. You can also get to them via the village website. If you go under Community, then Community to Support Resources, you'll find various links to other resources also, but for the veterans, you will find links there for the Veterans Assist, Veteran Assistance Commission of Cook County. If you are struggling and you are a veteran, please call 988 and hit option one. If you need to talk to somebody at the VFW or through the veteran community, please reach directly out to me. I'll be more than happy to put you in touch with somebody. If you are looking for mental health assistance, you can do so via the Jesse Brown VA Medical Center. I have their phone numbers, 312-569-6177. They will help you navigate your way around the VA system. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Kotay. And I'd like to note for the record that trustee Kaluzny arrived at 7:40 PM. Thank you for joining us. I'm going to, trustee Hendricks is, I was tuning in via Zoom, was going to join us by phone, but she is under the weather. I'm going to give her the option of logging off right now at this point, because she was trying to help us out, but she's very ill. So just note for the record that trustee Kaluzny arrived, and thank you for coming. Move on to reports of special committees with trustee Kahuli, Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, this will be short tonight. The Chamber of Commerce was supposed to have their regular meeting today, and it was moved to December 16th at noon in the basement of the library. And like many of these other groups, anyone is welcome to attend those. They are looking for, you know, they're looking for some new board members, and always looking to welcome new members to join the chamber as well. It's a really wonderful community of small businesses working together to promote each other and to promote the community. So please get in touch with them, come to a meeting or come to one of the events. So I don't have all the data on this past weekend's event, but I know trustee Ketchmark had gotten some information that the Kris Kringle Market, which is managed by our Farmers Market Manager, Gina Sharenow, had about 5,300 visitors. So a second year for this Kris Kringle Market, fantastically successful event. And so just wanted to thank everyone involved with making that happen, and everyone from the chamber for opening up their business doors, from helping work very closely with the village, with Luke and Parks and Rec, and, and the rest of our staff to help make it a very successful day of, of really highlighting our community and welcoming a lot of our community members and surrounding community members in for a beautiful night and, and day of festivities. So thanks for everyone involved, and I'll have some more details after their meeting on the 16th. And that ends my report.
Thank you, trustee Kahuli. Trustee Hendricks can update us at the next meeting regarding any planning and zoning updates. Trustee Ketchmark, Administration, Economic Development?
On the Economic Development Commission, there has been no meeting since our last meeting, so I do not have a report on their commission. Their December meeting has been canceled. Next meeting will be the third Wednesday in January. I'll report back after that. Many of you have probably noticed, the Brookfield shops at Progress Park, the, the sheds have been installed, the base have been installed. Starting within next week or so, the vendor and jury application program opens. That will go through the end of January. That will be picking out the, the six vendors to occupy those sheds for our Business Incubator Program. There will be several informational sessions starting, the first one starting next week on the 19th, so stay tuned for that. Libby has mentioned, she's had quite a few calls and interests in the program already, so that should be pretty exciting going forward. On last Saturday, of course, we, we schedule these events on beautiful days. You know, 5,300 people at the Farmers, at the Kris Kringle Market. We had about 1,500 to 2,000 of those make their way over to the Grossdale Station Museum. We had non-stop attendees there from 10 o'clock until 4 o'clock. That was a tremendous crowd and very exciting for that, too. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Ketchmark. Trustee Nair Matts, who's not here for Parks and Recreation. Trustee Kaluzny, anything on conservation and beautification?
Yes, and apologies for being late. And congratulations to the SE Gross Show Choir and Jazz Band for having great performances tonight. And I'm glad I was able to still make it here. The Conservation Commission met on December 3rd. They had a great presentation by staff member Noah Reif about a new program that's offered by the Illinois EPA called Recycle Coach. I guess it's not so new, but it's getting out to more municipalities. And the commission was really excited about this new app, where you can learn about all the different things and how to recycle them based on your service area. And so we're going to move forward with staff and figuring out how to launch that in 2025 with the support of the commission. We also had some great presentations by a couple of residents, one who is here tonight, so thank you for coming again. So hopefully have some more news on some recycling efforts in 2025. Also wanted to congratulate the village on being selected for the EV readiness cohort number three with the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus and ComEd. There was a great article in, in their news last week, and also in our news about that. And so we're really excited to get that technical assistance for the village to help support our EV readiness moving forward in the new year. Everyone had great updates on the different areas of the sustainability plan that they're working on, and we look forward to having a, a report on the progress for the village board in, in the middle of 2025. Their next meeting will be January 28th at 6:00 PM here at Village Hall. And the Beautification Commission has not met since our last meeting, but there is still time to nominate your holiday decor in our holiday decor contest. It has to be your front yard, and you have to nominate your own home, just so you're not just randomly nominating people around town. Even though that would be fun, we might do that in the future, but their next meeting will be on January 7th at 6:30 PM here at Village Hall. And that ends my report.
Thank you, trustee Kaluzny. The Solid Waste Agency and WCMC have not met since our last meeting. Brookfield Zoo, the holiday lights are in full swing. We had some really good weather, and there was a little bit of traffic congestion this weekend. But again, I think over the past couple of years, we've really stepped up the intergovernmental cooperation and working out ways to lessen the impact on our residents. The zoo's having tremendous crowds, and we appreciate that, but we also appreciate their efforts to help us reduce the impact on our residents by limiting access to the South Gate and having better communication and traffic control out there. So if you haven't been out there to see the lights, they're still going on through the holidays. It's a, it's really something to see. So good luck to the Brookfield Zoo. That ends the reports of special committees. At this point, I'd entertain a motion to pass the omnibus agenda as listed.
So moved.
Second. The motion was made by trustee Kotay, second by trustee Ketchmark. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Kotay?
Aye.
Trustee Gilhuli?
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny?
Aye.
President Garvey?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We are now going to move on to the items under Regular Business. The first item, I'd entertain a motion to approve a resolution for a property improvement grant for 8869 Burlington Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by trustee Ketchmark, second by trustee Kahuli. This was discussed at the previous committee of whole and recommended by the Economic Development Commission. It was the improvement at Irish Times. Questions or comments from the board? Yeah, I, I'd note that the agenda has the resolution under it listed as water main. It was just a typographical error, but this first item is a resolution for the property. And the, the resolution in the packet item, under item one, is the resolution to approve the property improvement grants program. Any other questions from the board? Roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Kotay?
Aye.
Trustee Kahuli?
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny?
Aye.
President Garvey?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item, I'd entertain a motion to pass a resolution approving a design engineering services agreement for the 2026 water main improvements to Edwin Hancock Engineering Company in the amount of $369,800.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by trustee Kotay, second by trustee Kaluzny. At the previous committee meetings, we were briefed by Derek and his staff from Hancock Engineering about the plans to go out for the bids for water main improvements early in 2026, so we can get the best bid prices. This is to start the engineering for that. Questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Kotay?
Aye.
Trustee Kahuli?
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny?
Aye.
President Garvey?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item, I'd entertain a motion to pass a resolution authorizing the execution of an auditing services agreement between the village and Lauterbach and Amen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by trustee Kotay, second by trustee Kahuli. This is for our annual village audit. Our previous auditor, we had them for a couple of years. We had some issues getting staff in here to get it done, their staff to get it done, in the fashion that we like to get it done earlier. We did put out requests to three major companies, and Lauterbach and Amen was the best responsive bidder, so that's staff's recommendation. Questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Kotay?
Aye.
Trustee Kahuli?
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny?
Aye.
President Garvey?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item, I'd entertain a motion to pass an ordinance to award a bid for demolition of 3827 Maple Avenue and a waiver of the bid process.
So moved. Second.
The motion was made by trustee Kahuli, second by trustee Kaluzny. This is the property at Maple in the tracks that was, suffered a roof collapse an extended period of time, and I know people have been asking why it has not come down yet. We have spent time in court, going to court, to get a court order to approve demolition for it, and it just took time to go through the Cook County process to go through a further, we couldn't do a bid process until we got that order, but we have a known company that has approached us and is willing to demolish it, and we believe that it is an appropriate fee and might lead to other opportunities going forward. So we're asking to award the bid and waive, or waive the bidding process and award the bid for demolition, so we can get this property down for public safety purposes and safety of our fire department if they had to go in there in an emergency situation. Questions or comments from the board?
No.
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Kotay?
Aye.
Trustee Kahuli?
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny?
Aye.
President Garvey?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item, I'd entertain a motion to pass an ordinance establishing the 2024 village tax levy.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by trustee Kaluzny, second by trustee Kotay. This was the subject of the public hearing earlier today and public comment. It was discussed at previous meetings and throughout the budget process. I appreciate everyone that came out tonight and the people that reached out to express their opinion on the levy. I assure you, the board has taken the appropriate measures to be as fiscally responsible as possible and still provide the services necessary in addressing and asking for this levy. I encourage people to come out not to just this meeting in the future, but budget workshops, and to attend the other taxing bodies, public hearings, and budget workshops, so you can understand and give the appropriate feedback where you might like to see changes or cuts going forward. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Kotay?
Aye.
Trustee Kahuli?
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny?
Aye.
President Garvey?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The final item under Regular Business, I'd entertain a motion to pass a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2025 annual budget.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by trustee Kotay, second by trustee Ketchmark. Again, this is a document that's come, you know, a lot of work is put into it. It takes a few seconds to vote on it, but there's a lot of staff time, board time, public discussion on this that leads to this point in time. This is our blueprint for the coming year to continue to provide the services and resident services going forward. So any questions or comments from the board? Again, I want to thank village staff for all their, all the department heads and village staff for their work on this document. Hearing no further public comment. Roll call, please.
Trustee Kotay?
Aye.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Kahuli?
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny?
Aye.
President Garvey?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That ends the item we have under Regular Business. Tim, do you have anything in the manager's report?
Just a quick item, thank you, President Garvey. To remind the village board and the public, we do can't, we, the board has canceled its second meeting in December, so this will be the end of our village board schedule for 2024. Coming up, we have our holiday closings, so on December 24th, December 25th, and January 1st, we will be closed all day to business. And on December 31st, New Year's Eve, we'll be closed half a day. So if you have to have business on New Year's Eve, come in during the morning, because we will not be here in the afternoon. On behalf of the village staff, I want to wish the village board and the public a very happy holiday season and a happy new year, and safe one as well. May the weather stay exactly the way it is today.
Thank, thank you very much, Tim. And again, on behalf of myself and the village board, thank you to all the village staff, the residents, all the employees. It's been a, it's been a busy year. It's been a challenging year. It flies by. You know, we reflect, this is probably our last meeting. We're always open to, if we need an emergency meeting, we will call it if there's business that needs to be dealt with, but I hope there's not. But it's been a very busy, productive year, and I thank the residents for their patience with all the construction and dust and debris going on. But I wish I could tell you it wasn't going to happen again next year, but it will. But we're going to continue to manage it and continue to make the improvements. So thank you to everybody that made it happen. There being no further business on the village board agenda, I entertain a motion to adjourn it at 7:57 PM.
So moved.
Second.
The motion to adjourn was made by trustee Kotay, second by trustee Kaluzny. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Kotay?
Aye.
Trustee Kahuli?
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny?
Aye.
President Garvey?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, the board meeting's adjourned at 7:57. We will go into the committee of the whole meeting in just a short couple of minutes. Thank you.